Good evening. I now call the November 7th, 2018 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. Moving on to our invocation, I'd like to turn the meeting now over to our student liaison, Jeremy Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have a senior at Phoebus High School, Nassim Land, who will be giving the invocation tonight, so feel free to lead us.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, I'll be reading a poem named "Hidden Mystery" by Fred Burks. In the deepest depths of you and me, in the deepest depths of we, lies the most beautiful jewel shining forth eternally. Within the precious jewel, within the priceless piece of we, lies a time beyond all time, lies a place beyond all space. Within the sacred source of radiance, lies a love beyond all love, waiting, waiting, and waiting ever so patiently, waiting for you, waiting for me, waiting patiently for all to see, the beauty that is inside of me, the beauty that is in me inside of thee. In the deepest depths of you and me, in the deepest depths of we, lies love and wisdom for all eternity. Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you for that. I want to ask you a few questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So, we were speaking, and you told me that you, in addition to writing poetry, that you were interested in music, so can you tell us a little bit about that?
Music?
Yes.
Okay. Well, music wasn't really a part of my life when I was younger, until my mother actually started playing a lot of music around me, and it was like the only thing that I had that made me feel secure around a lot of stuff in this world, you know? So, I started singing, and I took classes, and it's when I got into chorus, but marching band is my favorite thing. Now, when I was in marching band in ninth grade and 10th grade, it was nice, but when I came to Phoebus, it was actually a band that I actually am very proud of. I love the school. If you ever see me around school, you'll see me going crazy because I love the school with all my heart. So, marching band at Phoebus High School, marching fandoms is actually a big part of music, that's why I love music so much.
That's wonderful. So, what's your favorite subject in school?
My favorite subject is history.
History. Do you, what are your plans after school?
My plans, actually, I am actually taking the ASBAP this Friday, because I want to actually go in the military, it's been a dream of mine, and at first, I wanted to join the Navy, but again, when I came to Phoebus and joined the ROTC here, the Marines actually embedded into my heart, so I want to become a Marine so I can serve my country.
Wow. Well, you seem like a very passionate young man, and you know what you want to do, and that's very inspiring, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Henry?
Well, you know, I have to say something, because you touched my heart on all my favorite things, because I love the high step in band at Phoebus. Got to have high step in bands, love it. And the Marine Corps ROTC is such a wonderful organization, and they, you do so much community service, as indeed do all of our ROTCs in high schools in Hampton. Could you tell me a little bit about what's coming up? I know we're going to get to see you all in some parade soon.
Well, what's coming up is the Hallelujah Day Parade, but I can't march in that parade for ROTC, because I do marching.
You're being marching in the marching band, okay.
Both of those intertwine with each other, so I have, but I love marching so much, so I chose to march instead of marching with the ROTC.
Okay.
But we have the Hallelujah Day Parade coming up, and we also have another, other events coming up that haven't been announced yet.
Okay. And then you are always the ambassadors for Phoebus High School when they're guests there, and I think that's coming up with our Community Priorities Workshop, so we'll look forward to seeing you all then. And I have to tell you, I'm an old history teacher, so keep up that interest in history, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Just terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Nassim, do you have some other people you'd like to introduce?
Well, yes, I actually do. My biggest support, because I was scared a lot, my battalion commander, Second Lieutenant Joey Bowers, came with me, and I'm actually proud of that. I also have my two favorite administrative people, Dr. Stapleton and Mr. Majed back there. I also have Mrs. Joey Bowers. I mean, Mrs., my apologies. I also have Mrs. Bowers back here, she actually is a big support of me, too. I'm actually happy.
Any other board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, I just wanted to, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say to you that, are you aware that there is a marching band in the Marine Corps? Marine Corps marching band?
Yes, sir. I actually want to join the president's own band one day, but Staff Sergeant Rose, my recruiter, told me that they're just now adding vocalists into the Marine Corps, so I am shooting to actually be a singer for the Marine Corps.
Oh, okay.
Excellent. Any other board members? Thank you so much, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Taylor, for that. Now, we move to item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Do I hear motion?
Move adoption of, approval of the agenda as presented, Madam Chairman.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve adoption of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, for our next item of business will be recognitions, and for that, I'd like to call on Ms. Kelly Goral, who is our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, who will be joined by our school board member, Ms. Martha Mugler.
I'm a little vertically challenged, so I'm going to bring it down just a bit. There we go. Well, thank you, Ms. Cherry, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton Schools family. It is always a joy to spotlight our school division and the great things that our teachers and students are accomplishing. We have such talented students and staff, and this evening, we would like to show off some artistic talent and begin our recognitions with the Sister Cities International Youth Artist Showcase. For decades, Sister Cities International has leveraged the power that art has to transform societies and transcend cultural boundaries through the Young Artists and Authors Showcase. The showcase has given youth worldwide the opportunity to express their vision for a more unified, peaceful world through original artwork and literature.
This year's theme was "The Art of Diplomacy," which highlights the importance of citizen diplomacy and the innovative ways citizen diplomats achieve peace through people-to-people interaction. Students were encouraged to draw their interpretation from the experiences with sister cities and travel, exchange of international friendships, and the many ways that people cultivate friendships and relationships across cultures.
So, tonight, we are pleased to recognize Ms. Jody Nguyen. Jody, would you please come forward and join us on stage? I give her a round of applause as she's walking out. As Jody's walking up, I'd like to tell you a little bit about her. Jody is a sophomore at Bethel High School, and was encouraged to enter the contest by her Bethel art instructor, Ms. I Chu Ash. Her artwork was selected as one of the five national finalist pieces, so you can really see the magnitude of this award. Her artwork, along with the other winners and finalist works, will continue to travel around the country until next summer. Hampton City Schools was actually fortunate to have the opportunity to host the traveling Sister Cities International Youth Artist Showcase at the Rupert Sargent Building for a little over two weeks this past October. But if you didn't have the opportunity to visit and see all of the great work, you can see Jody's work displayed up on the screen, and we actually still have the original here upstage on an easel before it travels on to its next location. So, if you would please take a moment to kind of explain your concept, we'd love to hear from you.
So, I took, oh, here you go. So, I took the core, basic ideas of the theme and just, you know, like, take a spin on it, like, like take a different approach to it, to it, basically.
So, the different themes and the puzzle pieces and showing that culture diversity.
Yeah, taking all those ideas and think, what other ways would I present it, like, like a bowl of fruit, how you present it? Do you like cut into different shape and put them like, in arrangement, is how you arrange them and?
Excellent. Well, it's beautiful, great job. And Ms. Mugler would actually like to come up and congratulate you for that great job.
Yes, I would. I have a certificate for you, Jody. On behalf of our chairwoman, Mrs. Stevens Cherry, and our superintendent, Dr. Smith, I'd like to present you with this certificate, and it reads, "A Certificate of Achievement, congratulations. This is proudly presented to Jody Nguyen, isn't it, Nguyen?
Nguyen.
Of Bethel High School, Sister Cities Art Contest National Finalist." And it should be noted that, before Jody leaves the stage, that in the past seven years, Hampton has had two Sister Cities International Young Artists Showcase national winners and two national finalists, so great accomplishment on your part. I love the hands in your particular interpretation, very, very beautiful. It's hard to draw hands, I don't know if people know that.
Yeah, I use my own hands as reference.
Beautiful. They're very nice hands.
It's like any good art, sometimes you need reference from real life in order to create, you know, like, good drawings, because if you don't, then you make some mistakes in terms of like anatomy, and like, not drawing, drawing something you don't, you're not familiar with.
Very nice. Well, join me in congratulating, congratulating.
And as Jody's going back down into the audience, I wouldn't move on before also recognizing some of the other important guests in the audience that are here tonight that are supporting Jody. So, I believe Dad is here, would you please stand? We also have her teacher, Ms. Ash, if you would please stand to be recognized. I saw Mr. Saunders from Bethel, our executive principal. And then we also have Dr. Vivian Greasy, who is our Fine Arts Curriculum Leader, who does so very much for our students in the program. And I don't believe there were any members of the Sister Cities of Hampton that were able to join us, but if so, would you stand to be recognized? Ah, Ms. Ann Bane. Well, thank you for the wonderful support. All right, next, we are going to move on to our next recognition. We are pleased to recognize Armstrong School of the Arts for earning the 2018 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award from the Virginia Board of Education. The award is part of the Virginia Index of Performance Awards for Advanced Learning and Achievement. The program recognizes schools and divisions that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellent goals established by the Governor and the Board of Education. Fifteen divisions and 202 schools met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress towards the goals of the Governor and the Board of Ed to earn the Distinguished Achievement Award. And Armstrong School for the Arts, you are one of those 202 schools, so congratulations.
I see you jumping up, Mrs. Milcent Rogers, Principal for Armstrong, and our Assistant Principal there, Heather Goode, if you'll come forward. We have a banner for you all to hang in the school. I know. I want to congratulate you for this. Congratulations to Armstrong. I think we have some other proud staff members in the audience, would you all please stand so we can recognize you? Congratulations to all of you at Armstrong, to the children especially, and to our administrators and our teachers there. We thank you all for your hard work and dedication to our young children that attend Armstrong and that, all the work that you do to ensure that they have an excellent education. This is a great distinction you bring to our, our school system, so congratulations again.
All right, and Madam Chair, that does conclude our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Goral, and thank you, Ms. Mugler, for participating as well. You know, we are so honored to have a school division where we can recognize not only students like Jody, but also faculty and staff members who do such a great job in this school division. We're truly blessed to have everybody kicking on all cylinders here in Hampton City Schools. Any observations from any other board members? Thank you again. As we move forward with the consent agenda, these items in the consent agenda consist of 3.01, the Personnel Report, number 18-21, 3.02, Minutes of School Board Meeting of October 3rd, 2018, 3.03, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of October 17, 2018, 3.04, Certification of the Closed Session of October 3, 2018, 3.05, Expulsion Number 2018-09, 3.06, Expulsion Number 2018-10, 3.07, Expulsion Number 2018-11, and 3.08, Expulsion 2018-12. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, move approval as presented.
Second.
Second was by Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion among board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Now, as we move further, we are going now into a very important part of the meeting, the Superintendent and Staff Reports, and for that portion, I'd like to turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. We're delighted to have representatives from WHRO to present this evening, and Ms. Goral, Ms. Kelly Goral, our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, will introduce this particular presentation for the evening.
Good evening again. I have the opportunity to introduce our guests this evening. So, long known for its public service mission, WHRO is the only public broadcasting station in the United States that is owned by a collaboration of 19 local public school districts. And what's particularly noteworthy is that Hampton City Schools and Norfolk City Public Schools are the two original owners of WHRO. So, through WHRO TV, WHRO FM, WHRV FM, its website, and educational content delivered online to more than 286,000 students and 25,000 teachers, WHRO enriches the lives of the people of Eastern Virginia and Northeastern North Carolina every single day. Since its founding in 1961, the ownership has established educational programming and services as WHRO's core mission. As a leader in utilizing emerging technologies, today, WHRO delivers most of its educational content online. So, with us tonight, we have President and Chief Executive Officer, Bert Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt has passionately sought ways for public media to support the Hampton Roads community through broadcast programming and educational services in his 10 years as President and CEO of WHRO. He's been instrumental in the development and circulation of numerous virtual learning solutions for educators, including the production of online courses used in high schools throughout the state, the operation of the Commonwealth's Virtual Virginia Online High School Program. And also joining us tonight with Mr. Schmidt is Brian Callahan, the Chief Education Officer at WHRO TV. Mr. Callahan is originally from the industrial Midwest, Cleveland, Detroit, and Michigan. Brian is a former classroom teacher with more than 23 years' experience utilizing technology in education from primary through post-secondary settings. He has made hundreds of presentations nationwide on educational technology issues and innovations. But tonight, I believe it's Mr. Schmidt that will be doing that presentation, so he can't add that to his hundreds. So, Mr. Schmidt, if you would come up?
And as he's coming forward, I would like to also, Madam Chair, members of the board, to acknowledge that Mrs. Martha Mugler serves as the Board Representative for WHRO, and certainly serves the board quite well in that capacity.
I think my report's over. Madam Chair, Dr. Smith, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. My name is Bert Schmidt. Thank you for that introduction, I haven't quite had that before during one of these presentations. I am very honored to be here, because as was mentioned, you are one of the founding two schools that founded WHRO in 1961, when Hunter Andrews, who was the Chair of this body back in that day, and Vince Thomas, who chaired the Norfolk School Board, got together to use this new technology called television, and said, "Let's use it for other than selling soap, let's actually use TV to educate." And they created Home Room One, which is what WHRO stands for, Home Room One, H R O. So, if you learn nothing else, you at least know that part. Today, we're owned by 19 school divisions all around the greater Hampton Roads area. I have a report for you, I hope you all have a copy of this report in front of you. I'm going to be brief, but go through some of it. I do have to say, it's a pleasure being back here. I was here as a judge, I guess it was May of last year, at Bethel High School, where the freshmen, freshmen were doing their video and PowerPoint presentations on the negative impacts on social media, so I got to be a judge, and it was quite an experience to see some of those reports from, from freshmen at Bethel, so it's great to be back, of course, as always. And Holly Saunders, I want to thank for doing that. Into the report, page one, the leadership from Hampton, which is of course outstanding, as mentioned, Martha Mugler is your representative. I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention Phyllis, though, she's been around a long time, much longer than I've been around with WHRO, and she's actually chaired the ownership body, I think twice now, right? So, I want to thank you, Phyllis, for your long history, and of course, Dr. Smith works with all of our superintendents on a regular basis as we discuss regional educational strategies at WHRO. Also want to point out John Eagle and Jennifer Lockett, both who've taken leadership positions in the various committees we have that work regularly at the station. Getting into the report now on page two, E-Media VA, which is our Educational Repository of Learning Objects. This is a free service to every public, private, and homeschooler in Virginia. We have a contract with the Department of Education to keep that free. We have over 100,000 learning objects. These can be videos, audios, games, apps, lesson plans that your teachers can use in the classroom. They're all correlated to the Virginia Standards of Learning. We have content partnerships with national organizations like the Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress, but also, more importantly, local partnerships throughout Virginia with organizations who have great educational content, but they can't get folks to go to their website. So, we bring it into a portal, and then it's easy for your teachers to find what they're looking for with a keyword search, an SOL search, a very valuable tool for teachers bringing digital content in the classroom, as we know, kids want that digital content. So, E-Media VA is something the schools asked for about eight or nine years ago now, so it's been quite successful. And you have actually a single sign-on solution, so when teachers sign into your network, they're automatically signed into E-Media VA. Also on page one, we do a lot of professional development, both onsite with our special topic forums, as well as online through our Teacher Line Service. And on page three, we also have a significant space of workforce development. I know this is not quite your area, but we do have GED online, we have about 4,000 courses in 18 different industry sectors. We have workplace readiness modules, those soft skills that people want, employers want, things like, you know, math and reading for information and health and wellness, things that employers certainly are looking for. Page four, our Student Services. Of course, one of the big things the schools asked for years ago were online courses. It's a big requirement now. We have developed for you 24 high school online courses. The list is in page, paragraph two, Algebra, Trig, Astronomy, Biology, Chemistry, Earth Science, Economics and Personal Finance, English 9, 10, 11, and 12, French 1, Geometry, Health and PE 9 and 10, Math Analysis, Oceanography, Physics, Psychology, Virginia, U.S. World History and Geography, 1500 AD to present, and I skipped a line, U.S. and Virginia Government as well. We also created a Digital Citizenship Module, per requested by the, by the schools, to deal with, dealing with how to be online appropriately for middle-school age kids. And we recently provided a Middle School Career Investigations Module to all the schools, actually throughout the entire Commonwealth. And you make great use of these courses. Now, again, we're the manufacturer, if you will make the courses, and we give them to you, and you use them how you want. I know, I think you're using them primarily in a blended model through Google Docs, using the, the content within the course. Other schools and other divisions will use them a completely different way, but they're your courses to use however you want, so we're glad you're getting use of those. Item two, we found, while the, the online courses are an interactive experience, we also found that people simply sometimes want just the teacher online, you can click on and watch a class. So, we've done that with three courses now, Algebra, Geometry, and Earth Science, where we have literally taken every single lesson that you would experience if you were a child going through the class, and we've put every lesson online using a master teacher, some whiteboard technology. So, if a child misses a class because they are sick, you've got a snow or hurricane day, whatever the reasons are, they're out of school, they don't have to miss that class, at least for these three courses, because they can be assigned to watch the course through this master teacher online, and all these resources are available through E-Media VA. And again, they're all free for you. Also staying, number three on this page, Virtual Virginia, as mentioned, we've been operating Virtual Virginia since day one, and you had 88 students who took Virtual Virginia courses last year. On page five, we love to celebrate smart kids, we do that in a number of ways. Our PBS Kids Writers Contest, this is for children K through 5, they write and illustrate stories, they submit them to us, we have winners, we take those, those animated characters that they create, and we actually make a TV show of them. We make, have those characters come to life, and all of a sudden, their characters are alive and moving, and the children are amazed by the, bringing their wonderful stories to life, and that's been going... That's been going on for quite a long time. Of course, the Virginia Pilot Spelling Bee has been going on now. We're coming up in our 12th year of the Bee. You can see the participation there. And Great Computer Challenge has been going on for over 30 years. We have teams from K through 12 who compete in various software programs. And you can see on the following page, page six, you had a great representation last year and frankly, a lot of winners. So congratulations on that. Just item number six, just briefly, within all that paragraph, Education Now Spots. If you're a regular viewer of WHRO, you occasionally see spots with school superintendents talking about best practices within their division. Well, we just finished up a spot with Dr. Smith. I'm told it's in editing as we speak, so that should be coming out soon. I was hoping that to be able to show it to you tonight. You got off the hook. You're lucky. But that'll be coming out soon. So you'll be seeing Dr. Smith on our air, talking about the 16 academies, I think is what your focus is on. So we're looking forward to getting that on our air. Going to jump to page eight. We have been fortunate to receive a significant gift from Jane Batten to do environmental education. And we've got Earth Science Online Course, we've got the video course I mentioned. But one of the things we've been doing, and it's a really cool project, a few years ago, the Williamsburg Health Foundation came to us and they asked us to create, you'll remember Schoolhouse Rock? Some of you my age will remember that? Where it's a cartoon, it's an animated story with music. Well, we did a whole series around health. But now with this new environmental initiative, we're doing Schoolhouse Rock-type videos around environmental issues. And those of you certainly educated know that when you walk your dog, you should not leave the remains in the grass because it's bad for the environment. You know, the runoff, the rain comes, it runs off. Well, we have created, and I'm giving you the hint here to play it, it's a, this is a short version of what's called Scoop the Poop. So this Green Beat series, along with our Health Beat series, are meant for schools to use, and you can use them in your morning announcements, or however you so feel. They're yours. We're making them for you. So however it works with health and environment, to be used for, of course, a younger audience, although we've been getting great reaction from adults as well, especially on this one. Page nine, our Ready to Learn Services. I won't go through all the detail here, but we provide a whole list of services for early childhood ed. We've got, of course, our kids' website. We have both a STEM and literacy van. We have reading camps. We have coding camps, reading buddy programs. We've got library corners, anytime is learning time programs, a whole host. And you can see on page 11 at the end in blue, all the various ways that the division has taken advantage of those services. And again, doesn't cost you any more, so ask away. We'll keep coming out with our folks and working with your preschool folks. As school board members, what you really care about, of course, is the bottom line. Page 12 is your financial return on your investment. You invest each year $2 per student with WHRO. Last year, you received savings in value of $782,000. That's a 16 to 1 return on your investment. And I'm happy with that to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions by board members or any observations? Well, I've just got to say that when you talk about WHRO, everybody gets excited. And we're very happy to have you here tonight, but we're especially pleased that Ms. Mugler serves on that board. And for years, we've known about Ms. Henry's passion. Even when I worked in the school division, whenever Ms. Henry mentioned WHRO, just lit her face up. So, and I can see why, because you all do so many things to not only help our teachers in terms of education, but also this community and families who tune in. I know when my grandkids come here, Daniel Tiger's Neighborhood is one of the favorite. And I found myself watching it even after they leave, especially because, you know, I don't know if you watched it, but there was a baby born, and Daniel had to figure out how to deal with that. I just want to, again, just say how much we appreciate the partnership and how lucky we are to have such a partnership. Any others?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bert. Madam Chair and members of the board, our next report will be the Financial Report, and Ms. Deutsch, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide the board with the November 2018 Financial Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith, and all in attendance. It is my pleasure to present the monthly financial report. You will notice in this report that there is a new schedule that's provided. It is the comparative statement for revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances. And this just provides a comparison between the current fiscal year and the prior fiscal year, and this report will be added going forward as well. So looking at our revenue at the end of September 2018, it is trending lower, but this was expected due to the low August sales tax payments that we previously discussed for the August 2018 board report. We are expecting to get all of our money by the end of December, so we should be fine by then. Looking at our expenditures and encumbrances, they are actually trending a little higher, but this is just mainly due to the timing of payments, and we've been encumbering funds sooner than we did last year. You also find a list of transfers to and transfers from Category 9 Technology. And then I want to end the report just talking about our September 30th Fall Membership. So as of September 30th, our K through 12 Average Daily Membership, or ADM, was around Just for comparison, our budget was set at 18,600. So once the state gathers the information from the Fall Report, they're going to perform a reforecast. And that reforecast will be released to divisions about mid-December. Once we receive that information, we will share the results back with the school board, and where there's a need for any adjustments, we will take the necessary action. But it is important to remember that our final payments are always based on the March 31st Spring Membership. So we're hoping that our ADM will continue to stay above where we're budgeted, so we will have a positive impact for our budget for this year. That includes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Deutsch. Are there any questions any board members have? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes Superintendent and Staff Reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving on to the next item, item five is a hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowles, I have received none. Have you?
No, I haven't.
Okay, thank you. As we move on to our deliberation, item six, the deliberation items include 6.01, VSB proposed legislative positions, 6.02, revision of school board policy EA, support services and property management, 6.03, revision of school board policy EB, school crisis, emergency management, and medical emergency response plan, 6.04, deletion of school board policy EBA, buildings and grounds inspection, 6.05, revision of school board policy EBCB, safety drills, 6.06, revision of school board policy EC, buildings and grounds management and maintenance. This was formerly titled Integrated Pest Management on School Property. And 6.07, revision of school board policy EEAB, school bus scheduling, routing, and bus stop policy. We're going to begin tonight with 6.01, VSB proposed legislative positions, and I'll now turn the meeting over to our Vice Chair, Mr. Joe Kilgore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the fellow board members know, I am representing this board at the VSB Annual Convention in their delegate, as a delegate, in their Legislative Positions Meeting. And so at our last work session, I distributed to all the boards copies of all of the new, and I say new, there are new and amended legislative positions that will be voted on at the annual conference next week. And so there's a total of 11 positions. Seven of them are brand-new, that were pulled together by the Legislative Committee this past spring. And then four of them are amended. And I really say four, there's actually three amendments, and then there was a blanket one that actually amended 16 by just review of the VSB staff. So I was going to go through them at a high level, one at a time, and basically, I'm really looking for the board's consensus that we support these legislative positions. And if we don't, you give me your position that I then bring to the body next week. I will point out that all of these were unanimously approved by the Legislative Policy or Positions Committee for VSB, of which Mr. Samuels was a member. So the first one is a new position, and it deals with at-risk add-on. In particular, the at-risk add-on program, which is part of the basic aid, targets additional resources to schools, divisions, based on the percentage of students that are eligible for free lunch. And VSB, or Virginia currently, Virginia's current at-risk add-on percentage of 1 to 14% falls well below the national average of 29%. So VSB supports increasing the percentage of the at-risk add-on funding to more closely align with the national average. The second legislative position is an amended position addressing fair assessment of limited English language proficiency students. And it's fairly just general in its changes, but the rationale behind the changes are that they intended to take statements and make them more general to clarify and update the advocacy language to better reflect current assessments and resources needed for English learners. And the third legislative position, again, is an amended position for safe school environments, one that I really appreciated, which was that they added wording to the proposal that wants, and I'll just read it, "including additional state resources devoted to student mental health." The rationale behind the changed wording is that it provides comprehensive preventative state efforts to ensure student safety must include resources devoted to student mental health in addition to other safety measures. The fourth legislative position is a new one addressing graduation and completion index calculations for English learners. And I'll go into a little bit of the detail. What the VSB wants is currently, there's no adjustment for English learners when they come to the division as far as calculation in the graduation and completion index. So they wanted to make the language be more realistic. Students entering Virginia schools with both limited English language skills, as well as limited formal schooling of any kind, including many older students. They want to propose changes that would help to adjust the state calculation of the graduation and completion index to better reflect where many student learners start their schooling in Virginia. And then the fifth position is, again, a new proposal, which is amend the standards of quality to include dedicated funding for mental health, student support positions, and school security personnel. Currently, VSB supports amending the standards of quality to include specific funding for mental health professionals and school safety and security personnel. And the standards of quality currently do not reflect the current needs of school divisions. They're out of date, and they have not kept pace with the needs of students today. The sixth proposal legislative position is an amendment specifically to funding for governor school. Some school divisions have full-day governor school programs and are funded using the same mechanism as those that provide part-day governor school programs. And so the proposal is that since the full-day programs require greater funding, that this be accounted for in the budget appropriations. The seventh position is, or seventh proposal, is again a new one, to amend the Virginia Code to allow full-time employees of retired Virginia law enforcement officers in school security. The interesting thing here is that there is a Virginia Code related to the Virginia retirement system that does not permit law enforcement officers to be hired in full-time security positions without a loss of their retirement benefits. So the VSB supports amending that to, such that the current law would allow us to hire retired police officers to be full-time security personnels. The eighth position is one that modifies proffer limitations to restore important contributions to growing school divisions. And in particular, what this does is there are, VSB supports removing the limitations on proffers as addressed in the Virginia Code, essential for new school divisions and other needs driven by expanding development. And there was legislation, there's a state bill 549 back in 2016, that changed the cash proffer system in residential developments. And that has created a significant problem for local governments across the Commonwealth to provide for infrastructure. The ninth legislative proposal is color vision deficiency and its negative impact on school performance. This, again, is a new proposal. And the proposal goes into the things that the VSB would like to advocate for, advocating for universal screening of colorblindness, requiring the Virginia DOE to include colorblind, colorblindness screening as part of the students' regular vision screening, requiring the DOE negotiate new testing contracts, information and test items to be designed to be visible to children who are color vision deficient, and requiring the DOE to strongly consider producing future educational software and testing to accommodate for the large number of color vision deficient children. Currently, research indicates that in Virginia, we have about 21,000 students that are color vision deficient. And they believe that color deficiency negatively impacts school performance. So the 10th proposal relates to increasing student access for internships and apprenticeships. And I think we have a particular interest in this one, in that VSB supports establishing a tax credit for businesses that host students from a high school, technical center, or specialty school. school, as interns or apprentices, in a qualified field that aids students in completing C T E courses, course requirements, or in preparing for career certifications. I think that's fairly self-explanatory. And then, the 11th proposal is the one that I talked about, which is sort of a blanket of, it went through, the Legislative Positions Committee instructed V S B A staff to review all of the existing legislative positions, to identify which have either been eliminated because of the objectives being accomplished, or to identify positions which should be revised that contain outdated language. And the example is like No Child Left Behind has been replaced by the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And I won't go through all of those, but there were 16 of those, and they just tweaked the language there. That's it in a nutshell. It's actually much longer than that. So, if anyone has any comments about any of that, I'd be happy to take that. Otherwise, I'm kinda looking for consensus that everybody wants me to support these V S B A positions.
First, I want to thank you and Mr. Samuels for your work on getting these things established, and for the work you're gonna do in that meeting. It's a lot of fun. I've been to that meeting a couple times. It may sound like that the Virginia School Board Association is just asking for money. But there are critical issues and critical needs that are being addressed in this, and I think that's very important. And I also think that there's an issue that sort of underlies things like number five, when it talks of standards of quality funding, which is always, it's like that threshold that's always ahead of you and you never catch up with, because there's always someone in the state that says, "Well, we're gonna re-figure the SOQ funding in a more fair way." And that never seems to get to where we need it to be. It's always gonna happen, and it never seems to happen. But the other thing that comes up is, when the state does do something like, say, we're gonna give you a raise for staff, they never say it's gonna be for staff in September. They say it's gonna be staff in January, which we don't pay people like that. And it's gonna be for SOQ positions. So, all the positions they were talking about in item number five, like security personnel or mental health, they don't figure in any of that at all. So, when we get a request, you know, we're trying to meet a staff raise, it's only for SOQ positions, and we have other people that we need, like these positions they're talking about, that aren't covered by SOQ funding, and not covered by raises to SOQ funding. So, it's very, I appreciate you all going through this, and it's tedious when you're doing it, but it's very, very important. And we need to understand that standards of quality is a vague way of saying, "These are the key things in education." And then, there's always somebody in the legislature who says, "Well, we think too much money is spent outside the classroom, and we only wanna have, we want you to prove that such-and-such percentage of your money is spent on classroom teachers." Well, all right, the classroom teacher has a computer, and the computer needs a technical assistant, and the technology department doesn't count in that. But guess what? That's an expenditure of the school system. So, we kinda wish that people would be realistic about the standards of quality, and really do the revision that they say they're gonna do. And we appreciate that the School Board Association is bringing this to their attention again, because it's really important, because there's more than just a teacher in the classroom with chalk that makes your child safe, and looked after, and all those other things that we wanna do. So, thank you very much for doing this for us, Mr. Kilgore. And I think you could say that, as far as my contribution to the consensus, I'm for all those things.
Any other comments?
Let me ask this one thing. Wonderful report, and it is something that we need, and I'm all for, you know, casting my lot that way to support it. But one of the things that Ms. Henry mentioned, and it was sort of weighing on my mind also, was that how reasonable is it for us to be asking for all of this, when we know that it is going to be requesting a large amount of money? And should we even be worried about that? Just, you know, go ahead and ask anyway.
I think I have the answer to your question. The Virginia School Board Association asked for the collective body, 132 divisions, to help develop proposals, legislative position proposals. The V S B A employs lobbyists, and those lobbyists help the legislators in Richmond. They advocate for these positions. But one of the other critical roles that they do is, when legislators in Richmond develop bills that they wanna bring forward, sometimes, they actually touch base with our lobbyists before they bring them forward, because our lobbyists are paid to ensure that we do what's right for the public school systems in Virginia. And also, that it's like going to an expert and saying, "Help me with this. I've got this position." And these proposals and positions help guide those lobbyists so that they are collectively prioritizing and working toward what we, as a body, as an association, want to advocate for. So, it's not always funds. I will tell you, an example would be when there was legislation that almost made it to the finish line about grading schools A through F. And our lobbyists actively worked against that and explained why it was a bad idea. No funding really involved, other than maybe the threat that they would pull funding. But, so, we use these positions to ensure that the body's collective direction is communicated to the lobbyist. Thank you, Ed. That's what I needed to hear.
Excuse me. Any other comments or questions?
I'll just comment a little bit more on Mr. Kilgore's explanation. It also kinda, there's some master document, if you will, that provides what our positions are as a Virginia School Board Association. And so, that also kinda serves our legislators as well, not just our lobbyists for the association, but so that there is a level of awareness that can be created through these positions, that this is what the individuals at the public school level believe. And so, it helps also, I believe, to educate our legislators and keep them in tune with where we are as public educators, and what our positions are, and what our beliefs are, and whether that always gets support from our legislatures is another story. But it lays a good foundation of information for the folks up in Richmond, to kinda get a good feel for what public educators think our legislation should look like. SOQ is something that's been talked about forever and ever. As Phyllis alluded, it's never been really fully funded and so forth. But anyway, it serves as a great source of information on a lot of levels, and also for board members who go and participate in the Legislative Week events, that we go and lobby with our own local legislators. A lot of times, these positions are used, and a lot of times, we'll focus as an association on some specific areas of those positions to work with our legislators on, and really, it always happens that, you know, there's a bajillion bills that get put forward. Ms. Bain always keeps us apprised on what's out there, and, you know, it starts out that there are hundreds of bills that get presented, and it kinda gets narrowed down, and narrowed down, and narrowed down. But when we are working on those bills that come before us each year, we use this positions document as kind of our basis for our work in that area. And it's a springboard for our positions on that, so I hope that makes sense.
Well, yes. And I asked that question simply because of the 12 that were presented to us tonight, that I, you know, most of those are asking for funds. I understand the explanation for everything else, but specifically, the ones that were read to us tonight is funds. And so, that was the reason why I felt like that we needed to bring some clarity for those who may be listening in, the community, of what those are all about, and whether we should pursue it because of the funds or not. Makes sense?
Absolutely.
Say anything else on that? Any other comments, questions?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see that mental health made it to the table.
I would've been disappointed had you not said that. I can tell you right now. I even had a note by your name, Dr. Mason.
Exactly. So, can we pretty much, as consensus, have Mr. Kilgore move forward with this?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Kilgore, I want to thank you also for, I know you said it was gonna be high level, but it was very comprehensive, too, because we got it. We understood it. And we're, I think, we're very fortunate to have you as our delegate for that. I've already heard from a couple of people from V S B A already that you're the right man for the job, because it's pretty well-known that you are the person that makes sure that all Ts are crossed and all Is are dotted when it comes to pretty much any document. And we do appreciate that. So, good luck with all your work you have to do. Now, as we move on with the other items for deliberations, 6.02 through 6.07, are there any questions by board members? Because Ms. Reeves says she's ready to answer any we may have. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we will move those to action for the next meeting. Now, as we move to our items for action, they consist of 7.01, Review of School Board Policy, B B A, School Board Powers and Duties; 7.02, Review of School Board Policy, B D D D, Quorum; 7.03, Review of School Board Policy, B D D E, Rules of Order; 7.04, Review of School Board Policy, B F, Board Policy Manual; 7.05, Review of School Board Policy, B F B, Policy Development, Evaluation, Approval, and Dissemination; 7.06, Review of School Board Policy, B H D, Board Member Compensation; and 7.07, Review of School Board Policy, B J, School Board Memberships. I would add that all of these policies have been indicated as having five-year reviews with no revisions recommended. Do I hear motion?
Ms. Cherry, I would like to make a motion. I move that we approve these action items as a block, 7.01 through 7.07, for approval.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve these items, 7.01 through 7.07, as a block. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, moving to item eight, deliberation first read. These consist of 8.01, Review of School Board Policies, C B G dash R, Evaluation of Superintendent Evaluation System; 8.02, Review of School Board Policies, C F, School Building Administration; 8.03, Review of School Board Policy, G B, General Human Resources Policies; 8.04, Review of School Board Policies, G C P A and G C P A dash R, Reduction in Workforce; 8.05, Review of School Board Policy, G C P F, Suspension of Employees; 8.06, Revision of School Board Policy, K H, Public Gifts to Schools; and 8.07, Review of School Board Policy, K N D, Bond or Insurance for Safekeeping of Government Property. These, again, are all first reads, so if there are any clarifying questions, we will be asking them, but we will ask Ms. Reeves. I believe you have the first two. Ms. Ruth, you have the next three. And Ms. Deutsch, you have the next two. So, if you could provide information, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first is Policy G B, C B G dash R, Evaluation of the Superintendent, the Actual Evaluation System. This was reviewed on a five-year review, and no revisions are recommended at this time. The second, which is another board policy, C F, School Building Administration, reviewed with no revisions recommended.
Thank you. Are there any questions for clarity for Ms. Reeves? Okay, we'll now go to Ms. Ruth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first policy that I have on the agenda is Policy G B, General Human Resources Policies. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes. The next policy is G C P A, Reduction in Workforce, and there are, it's a five-year review, and there are no recommended changes to the policy itself. The next item on the agenda is G C P A dash R, which is the regulations that go along with the policy to reduction in force, and there are a few changes there. It is, again, a five-year review, and what you'll find is some updates to titles, also an update to the criteria for individuals that, how we identify who might be affected by a reduction in force. First change is on page one, just a title change, and also on page two, just a title change to the Alternative Adult Education Learning Center. For clarity, we've added the Virginia Department of Education on page three. And probably the most significant change, really, in the policy is on page three, under "Performance," where we indicate that performance concerns documented outside of the formal evaluation process will be considered as criteria for a potential reduction in force. And by that, we're referring to, as a, for instance, if you have an employee who is having attendance issues, and they may not, it may not be something that is documented in their evaluation, but they have received a series of memos to address the fact that they need to improve their attendance, we would consider those memos in addition to anything that was written in a formal evaluation process. And then, beginning on page seven, with Job Families, there are several updates to titles. And I believe that that is it for the changes for that particular regulation. The last human resources policy that is on the agenda is Policy G C P F, Suspension of Employees, and this policy is also a five-year review with no recommended changes.
Okay. Okay. Now, Ms. Deutsch, you're next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first policy, K H, Public Gifts to Schools. This is a five-year review, minor changes, just removing Hampton City in the first paragraph and adding School Board in the last paragraph, so that the policy consistency says School Board throughout. The next policy, K N D, Bond or Insurance for Safekeeping of Government Property. This is a five-year review, no revisions recommended.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks to all... Thanks to all of you all for explaining those, and these will be moved to our deliberation agenda for our next meeting. Now, as we move to information items, Number Nine. Item 9.01, next meeting, actually, we are very excited that we are coming up on our Community Priorities Workshop, which will be taking place on November 29 at Fevers High School at 6:00 P. M. And following that, we will be back here for a televised meeting on December 5, here at 6:30 at Jones Magnet Middle School. Is there any information from the superintendent?
Madam Chair, no further business from the superintendent.
Any board members have information they'd like to share? Hearing that we have no further business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.